All right, let's call our work session to order. That's so many papers. We're going through a presentation. I think it's just in the pocket. So before we get into, you know, what do you want to talk a little bit about? Just, I'm walking discussion, a lot of the team at the administrative level has taken adaptive schools courses. And this idea for us as a board to understand when we are coming to decision and when we are seeking to understand. I see Chris is nodding, Eric's nodding, I know. And I believe they're continuing with it. Next session, adaptive schools through Pikes, offering even more sessions for free. Other people want to attend, but there's this idea that when we need to know ahead of time, when we are simply to understand versus making that decision. And I think, you know, the work session is just that, is always understand for clarity, various topics. Because it is only in the regular sessions that we can take action, make a decision and move forward. And that separation that we continue to hold on to us. I think we're going to be able to catch the topics that this might be like. For all work. Yeah, the staff want to add their experiences with the conversations of the ways of talking.
Terms of the depth of schools.
And then maybe how it's implemented with your staff or change some of your practices as we work to become adaptive and changing time. Because it is all based on cognitive psychology. It uses our process habits of mind and some other thought leaders work to really foster self-regulation. And others, right, and with a, with a, with a high quality staff that we have, we want self-regulation, not corrective regulation.
It's been really powerful in, in our building. We're actually, and man, I won't have to say this during my work presentation. We're working with Ellie Martinez onsite and to craft really carefully put together agendas with real processes. And we're specific about saying this is dialogue, we're building understanding versus discussion. And it is just marvelous how that brings out and with norms and we have a new mission statement. And he said, how that brings out the best and people can hear other people who have, maybe they haven't heard before. I'm a huge fan of adaptive schools work and facilitated meetings.
I love that you mentioned that that equity of voice, allow his voice, it's not the sweetest voice, it's all voices.
Yeah, it's just been powerful, very powerful.
Anything from anybody else who has been?
I would just add too that I helped to facilitate and several different groups. And it's helped me to, as a, as a facilitator, to run meetings that are much more purposeful. And are focused on getting what we need to get done, done. While still allowing for, for variety of voice. And then at the end, kind of using common language and common agendas and a common invitation to the meeting with an attached agenda. It's really allowed a cohesiveness of feedback for myself as a facilitator so that I can grow and, and do a better job. And it's really created a system for that. So several different pieces, but I feel like there's a much better way for me to get feedback from folks and to do better at, at the facilitation.
What might you say to people who say it's fluffy or it takes more time?
I think maybe on the, on the front end, it takes more time, like any good kind of system. But now I feel like it's much easier. And, and having had two meetings with one particular group kind of in, in this cycle. The feedback that I received at the last meeting and I think a willingness to provide that feedback because it feels really like a safe place. I think that's much more constructive. So while it may have taken a little more time on the front end for me, the, the dividends are incredibly significant. And I, I, I don't think it feels fluffy and I think that's saying something.
I'd like to add to that. It doesn't feel fluffy at all. If because of how carefully we craft our questions for each other, we generate them together. I feel like we get more done with each precious minute and sixty minutes than we've gotten done before.
I would agree with that, Chris.
Totally focused.
And I would think with the focus on PLCs and the MTSS process this year, that if you don't have your staff engaged and have structures for that feedback, because they're the ones doing the work. It's going to fall flat with the implementation, is my guess. Tell me I'm wrong. I love it when people tell me I'm wrong.
I would, I would add that in the discussion part, that doesn't mean the outcome is final decision as well. It could be at the end of this meeting, you know, that from this meeting till the next time we gather, here's what we're going to be working on in between. But it's clear what the next steps are. But decision might not be made, but here's what we're going to do together.
I, I think the discussion versus dialogue piece, that's probably what I got out of it most and that I used and see is just really setting the framework and knowing what, what the outcome of that meeting is going to be like. Is it something, is it just a discussion that's all we're going, or I mean, is it dialogue and that's all we're doing? Or are we leading towards an actual discussion where there may be something else that meeting or it might be something to follow up later? But kind of really level setting and having an idea of what that meeting is at that point. So you're not confused at the end.
I love it. Well, thank you. I'm hoping that we model that continually in our work sessions as a board is that equity of voice that people have been in and feeling like how we can have some pretty good discussion to understand before then we end up in a regular session before we do our work. Thank you. District accountability, mid-year update, I'm excited more to hear from our district accountability partners than us. Who do we have first? Salary and compensation?
Yeah, we have salary and compensation, so that too. So our salary and compensation committee is the price of Mandy Carrigan and Angie Glassman from high school. Vanessa Roberts at the elementary, Amanda to elementary, Aria and Linda from middle school. Ella Batson is a student representative and then Suzie and myself. So talking about what the subcommittee accomplished in the previous two years, Linda and I were not on the subcommittee the previous two years, Suzie was. But they were able to, over the past two years, get started on working on some leveling of some salary discrepancies. Everyone received a 4% raise moving into this school year. And they were able to disprove some of the concerns around pay inequity. Did some just general digging on staff concerns where it surrounded the subcommittee of salary and compensation. And we compared ourselves to other school districts of similar size and in the Pike Peak region. And the focus of the last two years was on certified staff and are discovering that it's a lot more in line. And we did increase the substitute rate $5 a day. So moving forward, do you want to talk about that, Linda?
Sure. Which is two topics or issues to focus on this year. The first one was to evaluate classified compensations because last year we didn't get certified. We need to be able to attract and retain qualified staff and would like to give them a livable wage. It ties into our strategic outcome number seven from the district action plan to recruit, retain and develop the best staff in all possible positions. Our second post focuses to increase the variance between lanes to allow masters level equivalent to count towards lane advancement without university issued transcripts. You go to the same class, get the same training. And if you pay $400 more, you can get the university transcript. It's not like you've been to a different class. Not in all cases, but in many. The majority of our staff at the, are the bachelor's plus zero and bachelor's and masters plus zero lanes. We believe staff are seeking development opportunities but not getting financial credit for it. This ties into strategic outcome number three from the district action plan. All students will be surrounded by highly effective staff who are continuously exploring and growing professionally.
And then as a team, we're going to continue to update a wage analysis for classified staff that I've had going for four years. Where we compare again to local districts from the Pike Peak region. And in addition to that, just because things have changed so much in the job market, we're going to do our best to compare ourselves to the outside industries and the private sector jobs that might be comparable food services and working in restaurant, restaurant industry. Then we're going to continue to analyze the neighboring district salary schedules about that main advancement piece. We're at like $904 per lane in advancement with 10 masters level credits per lane. So we want to look and see how other districts are handling that. Are they going more like 12 or 15 credits per lane? Is it a higher dollar amount per lane and just kind of get some more information on how their link structure works?
That is all. Can you, I mean, stand on, I'm intrigued by when you're talking about, you know, people not having paid college credit instead and looking at either embedded jobs development or other coursework.
Well, it's our understanding from some certified folks on our team that they'll attend masters level professional development that would be a 500 level or higher. And at the end of that professional development, they paid to be there and they can pay another $400 or $600 to have out of state issue them a transcript and do nothing else but write a check. So it's sort of defeats that, that $900 lane advancement. Where a lot of districts do not require the university issued transcript, just prove that they've received professional development that would equate to a masters level class.
Right, so then it would go to their steps and lanes and wouldn't be the credits maybe or license for the law or still would be nice license or we're going to figure that out. Yeah, looking forward to hearing more about that. Other questions?
There'll be, each of these groups will present their final recommendations in April. So if something comes up in the meantime, this is a great opportunity to reach out to the DAP members for that.
Can I just add, like, the big thing with classified, I'm sure most of you have heard, it's a lot of school districts are really struggling right now keeping their, their classified staff or even hiring any classified staff. And, you know, we, we're lucky that we have them, but we want to be able to keep them. And so I think that's just, oh, we're not going to totally turn a blind eye to certified. I really think that's a huge focus for that reason.
Not bad, that, that is also coming from their colleagues who are not in certified position and in classified position. So it is, it's personal. I can share, Amy Hall, excuse me, Amy was going to present and also we said, but they had some things that popped up. So Natalie and I are both on this committee, so I'll kind of talk through it if I'm not mistaken. So just last couple of years, made recommendations to move towards master facility plan. Survey communities to find out areas of highest need that happened in our first year together. Brainstorm some great opportunities, including the best grants. And then school tours that we've conducted, vision team selection of architects, lots of involvement and evolving around those pieces. But the, the two areas that this group really wants to continue to explore are alternative, exploring alternatives to address safety needs and brainstorming those multipurpose spaces. Some of the, the feedback from folks along the way is that we, we could have done a better job of communicating why within the master facility plan, so much around safety and security is important. And how do you find that balance between sharing, sharing what the needs are without being alarmist or, or showing the public where our weak spots are? So really kind of crafting opportunities for us to really address that. So, and then the second one is creating a bond advisory committee. So about 15 to 20 folks who are independent of what we did previously last year where we had our messaging team around the master facility plan. And this would just be a diverse group of individuals hoping that a couple of board members would also be on that advisory committee as we move forward. But really getting to that facilitated dialogue and consensus building as we talked about, Tina, that sometimes you talk about ideas, but that doesn't mean a decision. And I don't really enter those meetings saying, we're just discussing right now, it's not a decision. And then the ways that this group is going to work together to provide a recommendation by April. We know that the board will need to make some decisions about bond, potential bond and best before then. But just moving forward, number one, identify the data that will help us to continue to develop a great, strong communication plan. And then also really highlighting E-Pass Elementary School, Manta Elementary School, those are pretty, those were pretty well identified in the master facility plan and bond package that was put forward. So there, there really weren't as many questions around that. And then after the meeting with architects, this committee will continue to create messaging. So that is relevant for each of the communities. So what they really talked about is that the capital improvement in E-Pass may not impact the elementary community as much in terms of where they live. But how do we make sure that that's good for the collective? And then last thing this group is going to do is brainstorm individuals to be a part of that on advisory committee and invite those individuals to schedule meetings and ensure that we have a good working group agreement as we move forward. So that's, that's the word I really don't know.
I missed the last meeting, so I couldn't get a little out of the way. But this was my track.
Sure.
So I see that they'll be back on April 18th to give us the end of the year report. Will we be making a decision that evening after hearing the report?
For the bond, most likely we need to make it before April as we.
Okay, so be sure of that.
But this group is what's basically decided that they really want to support the boards, what the board moves forward with. They want to make sure that this group is supporting that board work and accountability framework. So they'll be seeking some more direction from, we want to see more direction from the board. Other question? If you have ideas of people to add to that, that bond committee, advisory committee, please let us know. We've started to generate a list of folks.
Yeah, that was a thought of mine when I saw the diverse group, which is important. So get that participation. We've had some community members reach out to the board. So certainly those would be people that would love to get involved. But, but yeah, I don't know, do we have a policy or not policy, but a process identified to select this group? So we can ensure that diversity here.
It's possible that we can, this group could potentially just submit a list of, of names to the, to the board and say, here's who, here's who we're thinking. Could be a comprehensive, second up maybe, but a lot of different stakeholder groups between businesses, nonprofits in the area, presidents with children, without children, Green Mountain Falls.
Yeah, the more we can address these things beforehand, obviously, we can use the unsuccessful passing of the bond as an opportunity to really get down to what are their concerns and flush those out prior to the next.
Yeah, I think there's people out there that are loyal opposition. In other words, they support the schools, they support the community, but there wasn't enough either information or they weren't clear on the information. Or, you know, they, it's the need that we saw. And so we need to hear from them more about what, what, what are they thinking, what are they saying? So I think you're right, we just need to get out there and kind of figure it out along with this committee about who else, who else do we know that they're from and how do we engage?
So core diverse committee is probably going to be the key. And then because you can't afford to keep a committee, otherwise you'll get, even no matter how good your discussion and those sort of things are, you won't get much done. So a small core diverse group that maybe does a good job of representing as many opinions as possible, getting together to kind of help guide the process, getting feedback from other stakeholder groups from all the other places that we thought, well, might make more sense, in my opinion.
Now, you can see one and two really do overlap in that communication plan and then the groups. So who will it be seeking some advice from as well as we look there? We're small but mighty little task force.
Feedback and evaluation.
We, there is, we have a mix of Mr. McMartin's on it. We also have some teachers, Teacher Wood, Bye, or two teachers, so elementary, middle school, giving me of a student voice. Stephanie Wilson at the E-Pass is a counselor that's participating, Mr. Briggs Hale, Judy Johnson is new this year to our team in the kitchen. So have not had a food service on DAP, I don't think, last year. So that's a nice addition. Also some parents, Ariella Brook and Anice, and then we have Marcie, the Boses, on our team. Last year, what we go deep into is looking at the evaluation system and really focusing on feedback and supporting educators in growing their instruction. We've noticed I'm really having classroom doors open more to really welcome that feedback. School administration teams are working towards, and have identified some key focal points for their staff members to focus in. Last year was also the time when late start websites became apparent as a need that was granted for professional development time. And lastly, on really working to define that rich and robust learning environment. Our two new topics to really dive even deeper into this year is our certified staff rubric evaluation with a potential revision. And also revising and or creating the classified evaluation system in Rubrik. So diving into that first one, why we chose that topic was looking back at when there's a fifth teacher standard was created on relationships. We were starting to really look deeper to see, do we need that? And since that has been developed, the Colorado has changed some of those teacher standards, so there's some overlap in it. And we've noticed a lot of that being kind of not necessarily equitable to all the teachers. So we do want to get teacher feedback, how they feel about it. Is it too subjective? Do we still need it? Do we still want it? Can we see that it is covered in other areas as well? We also want to look into feedback and score. Some of the teachers feel like maybe they wanted more knowledge prior to just the end of the year. So ways to kind of fill that for them. And also to really see ways in which we can communicate to the teachers that the summative is a learning tool, something they can use for their own professional role. Kind of looking at the analogy that came up with that teachers, something like it was like a finalist name before and they just took it and left with it. And trying to help me change that shift to see, okay, these are areas for me to grow in, these are areas I'm strong in and to support that change. And that specifically aligns with action plan number four on improving the quality of feedback for growth and development. And number one, engaging the staff members meaningful into our core values, key leverage points and our strategic outcomes. And then the second one was revising, creating a classified evaluation system. And we started kind of look into it and certain parts of it really do align with all of our classified staff. But other ones, we do need to look into for some revision. Because we're comparing the bus driver on the same rubric as we went to Stacy as the secretary of the high school. We're comparing our food service to the same as our custodial staff. So they have different areas of needs, some do fit for all of them. And so really looking into how can we make it equitable for each of them. So on the bottom, some next steps towards each of these. I feel like I actually already went through all of that in my discussion, so I don't think I need to restate it.
This is a pretty meaty task, this number one and two. What's your kind of timeline objection? I know we're here for the weekend at the end of the year, but, and I'll be asking, it's probably in the end of the year, so I'm going to just ask it now. What did really kind of your, this, this is not a six month task, what's kind of your vision?
And I will say, yeah, after we left that last, our very last staff meeting, and I can't speak to the whole group. But I will say, as I left, my initial gut was, wow, I was unaware that some teachers felt like it was kind of a final exam score. And I think that would be the area of number one focus on, but on that, how can we use this to grow? Like, how can you look deeper into this rubric for you to think about where do you need to personally grow? And where are your strengths in support, maybe other members?
Remind shift about evaluation.
The evaluation. So I think that's one that could be kind of the first kind of task within that larger realm. And they do, because our group is so large that we could split into two groups and have one really dive into revising that classified evaluation. And I think once we dive into that, I do think there's potential to at least get started in revising that, specific standards within that. And I don't know, Eric, it also happens since.
Yeah, I would also say that we, you know, initially, when we spoke, just like Natasha mentioned in terms of, you know, in terms of, because we have quite a few members of that subcommittee, we were able to divide up and, and start looking at both of those two big tasks essentially. And really initially, the, the charge that I kind of put forth to, to the subset committee that I was working with was really around that fifth standard. But, and waiting, you know, right now the professional practices standards are not all weighted equally. And so that was one of the things, but they, as a group decided, you know, it makes the most sense to do both at the same time, to really dive into what would that mean? So our first step will definitely be like just really crosswalking, you know, the content of that fifth standard with the rest of the rubric. And then, and then really diving into that waiting.
I wonder what we hear from the state around local measures and changes, going to go 191 to a bit, people breaking the data portion. Are you hearing anything along those lines?
I mean, I've just heard, you, you maybe have heard more than me. I'd have heard that that has been conversation or that, that the startings of that sort of a conversation, what might major students learning look like in the future as opposed to a 50/50 split, at least the way it is right now? And or, you know, what's, what are some of those metrics, you know, appropriate things? So it rolls around it, like you said, so, but I don't have any specifics right now that I've heard of.
I think, you know, CDE just released the, the school performance framework that, that that's going to be frozen again as we predicted. And so I think we're just going to be in that holding pattern a little bit longer for what's it be for the schools as a new board.
What's your kind of timeline objection? I know we're here for the weekend at the end of the year, but, and I'll be asking, it's probably in the end of the year cycle, or they're just asking now, like, what did really kind of your, because this is not a six month task. What's kind of your vision?
And I will say, yeah, after we left that last, our very last staff meeting, and I can't speak to the whole group, but I will say, as I left, my initial gut was, wow, I was unaware that some teachers felt like it was kind of a final exam score. And I think that would be the area of number one focus on, but on that, how can we use this to grow? Like, how can you look deeper into this rubric for you to think about where do you need to personally grow? And where are your strengths in supporting maybe other members?
Mind shift about evaluation?
The evaluation. So I think that's one that could be kind of the first kind of task within that larger realm. And I do, because our group is so large that we could split into two groups and have one really dive into revising that classified evaluation. And I think once we dive into that, I do think there's potential to at least get started in revising that. Specific standards within that. And I don't know, Eric, it also happens since.
Yeah, I would also say that we, you know, initially, when we spoke, just like Natasha mentioned, in terms of, you know, in terms of, because we have quite a few members of that subcommittee, we were able to divide up and start looking at both of those two big tasks essentially. And really initially, the charge that I kind of put forth to the subset committee that I was working with was really around that fifth standard, but, and waiting, you know, right now, the professional practices standards are not all weighted equally. And so that was one of the things, but they, as a group, decided, you know, it makes the most sense to do both at the same time, to really dive into what would that mean? So our first step will definitely be like, just really crosswalking, you know, the content of that fifth standard with the rest of the rubric, and then, and then really diving into that waiting.
I wonder what we hear from the state around local measures and changing, it's kind of the 191s that a bit people breaking the data portion. Are you hearing anything along those lines?
I mean, I've just heard, you, you maybe have heard more than me. I'd have heard that that has been conversation or that the starting is that sort of a conversation, what might major students' learning look like in the future as opposed to a 50/50 split, at least the way it is right now? And or, you know, what's, what are some of those metrics, you know, appropriate things? So it rolls around it, like you said, so, but I don't have any specifics right now that I've heard of.
I think, you know, CDE just released the, the school performance framework, but that's going to be frozen again as we predicted. And so I think we're just going to be in that holding pattern a little bit longer for what's it be for the schools as a whole.
I guess what I'm thinking is if, if we're going to put a lot of time and energy into recreating the rubric and knowing performance rubrics, especially for staff, but then if we do away with that portion of it, be cognizant, we may need to add a layer of data into the performance rubric as an optional, so like at some point, so you don't have to go back later, do it all at once, and then work that in at a later point in time. Because I'm just seeing that that seems like where the state with that local kind of goal is going. But we'll see, crazy times.
Last year was the first year we had a certified, classified, excuse me, rubric, so, believe it or not. So that was the first time, so we borrowed that from another school district. And we knew it wasn't going to be perfect for each of the different job types, but it was a start. And that some are universal across different job types, but not all are relevant. That was an initial start.
When we're looking at a potential revision of rubric and evaluation process, are we also looking at how that's executed? So what I'm getting at is maybe moving from more of a hierarchical or dictatorial type of, I'm coming in to review you, and more of a collaborative, kind of how we started meetings tonight. And we've been talking about recently and working towards lowering the stress level. We're not coming to get you, we're actually working to collaborate for improvement and so forth. I'm just curious if that's being considered as to how these are actually executed.
There was one discussion about maybe adjusting the mid-year review for the exact reason that maybe the mid-year review is far more collaborative on areas in which maybe administration has already seen like ways that the teacher could improve, areas of their strength, and how they could support them. Leading in that way, that's really collaborative and built in discussion with the teacher. And the teacher has a play to say, this is an area I do want to work to grow in. How can you support me in growing in that area?
Likewise, asking the question, how has my feedback been helpful or not helpful to really seeking that? Then it's a, it's a mutual relationship.
Yeah, and actually, I just saw that came up in instructional rounds too, as we were talking about more, this could be more peer evaluations, because oftentimes, administration hasn't been in the classroom for a number of years. And so from an evaluation standpoint, beneficial input can be much greater with someone doing this, this work. So if we could potentially integrate and weave that in, I could see that, you know, I'm going to give some tips and tricks that are valuable as a teacher from other teachers, because they're in, they're in the same business on it, by the way, so, just a thought there.
I don't know, I taught first grade today. They even drew pictures of me. It was with cat ears, which I think was complimentary from.
I wish I could have been a student in your picture. That's about where I was.
It was, yeah, it was, it was fun. It's always good to be back and see kind of even just two children with needs, the diversity even between those two. It's, it's a great reminder for all of us about the struggles that our teachers go through. With even just two, two kids in an intervention class, a great reminder.
Can I just add, you know, after our instructional rounds processes, the first time that's really been systematically in all of the schools, we get feedback and try to make that a better process. But for example, Dustin, Dustin's not here tonight, he has a sick kid, he wanted to show her a lot more. But I'm sure he might be watching from home. But really, as they, he's already looking at the evolution of what that mini rounds will look like in the, in the spring, so that more staff can get into those observations and really have that dialogue between each other. So I think as we refine these practices, but yeah, you line the best off from your peers? Or is this just the feedback that you've got?
Well, the thought might be you have, you know, so currently you have an administration review, but maybe you have a peer review as well, and those are both included. So if, if a staff review says something, administrative review says something different, we might say, why is that? Might cause us to be curious and, and look deeper, give us more information.
The inquiry is another tenant of the GAFLE school, so thank you. So if there's any more questions, I would just say this, I'm going to take this prediction to Vegas, so that when we see you in April, you're going to give us probably a timeline that goes into next year and for the work, is my guess.
For the world.
Yeah. It's a big meet, PD topic, especially to be better well, as you said, incorporating all voices. And especially if you're looking to delineate your classified staff, based on performance and job description and such. So excited to be, thank you for the work. COVID. You are welcome to stay, we have Sue.
I'm glad you said like this.
A hot plate and cupcakes somewhere? Yeah. I think we should, yes. I don't know where we're going to put it.
Last Monday, I think.
Sunday, Sunday. We have to keep moving and feeding.
So we met on Monday, Natalie and I met with Judith and Jackie, our school nurses, and really talked about the new guidance that's coming out. They are specific about calling it requirements and recommendations. Essentially, after this Friday, school districts in El Paso County will not be able to require quarantine. That's probably the biggest one, I'm looking at Susan compared, because we've been so connected. And so with that, we really would recommend at this point that in, in January, that we move to masks being highly recommended in all schools. Some of the reasoning for masks going on, of, of course, just changing, changing positivity rates in August. But we also knew that our children below, under 12 could not get vaccinated. And now they are starting to, to do that. And so that doesn't mean that folks would not be encouraged to wear masks, or if they wanted to wear them, we would create environments where that's okay. But that's the recommendation that, that we have at this point. Also, when that initial guidance was, was coming out, was that both, if folks were masked, then you couldn't, you didn't have to quarantine. And now that's not the case anymore, because no one can quarantine at the school. We can still, we still can require isolation, that's for a sick person. And so that's very important that we will continue to have our COVID intake form, or sorry, it's called a symptom tracker. The symptom tracker will still be used, so if a person is COVID or is in a household with someone with COVID, then they would still submit that to us, so our front office staff can monitor that. And then if they just generally have symptoms, they should not be in school until they're fever free for 24 hours minimally, especially not COVID. So I'd just share that with you all, wanted to see if there's any discussion, Natalie, is also for.
I think the big thing is just that tomorrow's a work session, so any decisions would happen beginning of January. But hopefully there's many pushback based on recommendations. And, and just to clarify too, this is our first, I would say, legitimate series of recommendations that was made, you know, since we started meeting, so.
One of the things you mentioned, 24 hours, no fever, these types of things, these are also then recommendations, right? Are, are people required to, you know, like we used to do the check-ins, i- is there anything?
That's kind of like, schools always have had those, like, if you grow up, we don't want to see you again for a while. If you have a fever, we don't want to see you for 24 hours, and it's not, that's not restricted to COVID, that's.
That's not school.
Right, but we're on pandemic, and so that's where, when we start to release and, and, and let go of any, any requirement, then just looking at what may happen.
I agree. We're going to have to continue to be diligent about symptoms, ask the parents to come. And, you know, usually China has symptoms and you've got to not be here. That the key with quarantine is that these are individuals who are simply free, and we were sending them home. So, so we would still, as much as possible, notify that they've been exposed to a positive. That might, that's really much harder at the secondary level, much easier at the elementary level, because they're in COVID classes. Yeah, you're right. But sometimes, yeah, we, it's, it's standard for us is if your child is sick and there's no documented reason, then we can say, we need to, we need you to take your child home. And we'll continue to do that, unless there's allergies that have been identified and we'll continue to.
And still highly recommend masks.
Yeah, highly recommend masks.
So we're looking for the city, hopefully, to make a decision to go with highly recommend masks as opposed to mask mandates, since we had a few only place I know that's done that. Okay. I mean, that's kind of how we started here, I believe.
Yeah, that's right.
But I think we just finally had enough changes between policies and access to vaccinations that we could get to this point. And we're just kind of stuck.
Yeah.
For several kids getting vaccinated, it's a deal, but I wouldn't.
Yeah, yeah. And we haven't seen when the, when the students are quarantined, that they were wearing a mask or not. We have not seen, we haven't seen a significant transmittal. There we have, there's one case that we can recall where a child, they might have been wearing a mask and might have become symptomatic, but that's over an entire semester.
And we've only been quarantining those that we truly believe were exposed because they didn't have a mask.
Especially important is we had two elementary schools, one that was required mask and one that was not. And we really did not see a significant difference in any of those at that point. So I think it really comes down to what we've been saying all along, sick folks need to stay home, and we just need to monitor those symptoms.
And how are people doing? I know the rapid tests, I mean, I know Nana too has been distributing them regularly, because I hear my friends with littles. Hold on, I'm going to give them a test. Yeah, we'll see if we're going to go skiing with you or not. So how, I mean, are we just continuing to?
We'll just continue to talk about that, at no cost, of course, and try and make it as easy as possible. I got an email today from CDPHU that we're having another shipment in the next three to five days. So that should carry us pretty significantly. We have a.
We have a lot.
Yeah, sometimes when they go to expire, we have, we kind of can say, here's, because there's still.
Testing part.
There's still, there's still viable tests, but we don't use them for our students, but we have plenty.
Not as good as a measles party, but you know how effective those are, those tests? I've never, I don't really look at them. I think they're mostly pretty effective, they're not 100%. I mean, if you have symptoms and you have a negative test, you start positive, you know, the positive, you get another test for like 48 hours or so. So I think they're, I think they're reasonable. I, I think this probably makes sense, seeing a lot more people are getting vaccinated. The hospitalization, at least on the data, they look like they're going down. A big issue in the hospitals is not necessarily the numbers of sick people, it's the number of staff that they care about, number of sick people, and that is connected to COVID for a lot of reasons that we can't fix today. So I, I think this makes perfect sense. And again, that's, we actually, in my opinion, take a thoughtful approach at the start of the year. We're actually looking at data, we actually talk to like doctors and people that know stuff about COVID as opposed to maybe the New York Times, and we have a plan, and so I'm glad we're getting back to them. I think that makes sense. I think it's good for the kids, and I think it's good for the parents, and it's good for the community.
It's been, like I said, with Natalie and Judith, it's been harder and harder to, I wouldn't say enforce, but really make sure that folks are, it's a mask fatigue that's definitely setting. And it does, it affects children's access to learning. And, and really, we have to, I, I believe as well, that if I'm, if I'm not sick and I've been around someone who was sick, then I should have a responsibility to wear a mask, but that's, that can be very harmful. Make sure I'm not transmitting anything, COVID or not. Anything else that I will present tomorrow night to city council? And when do they, what do they make, take the next action?
It'll be, so I don't think we're meeting in the last two weeks, so it'd actually be that first Tuesday, January. Be the first opportunity. So that would be.
Before school starts.
Yeah, so January 34th.
We go back to six, yeah, that's great.
So if the board, this board's okay, I would like to say that we have made a, I would like our community to know that we made this recommendation to the city council, and that is our, our recommendation, that's the mask. In January, all things considering, there's, not, the home department doesn't come out. Are you all okay with me putting that on?
I think Gary would agree too, since that was his position at the start of the year, not if I speak for Gary, but.
And he couldn't come on.
Well, next time we're doing it in a slow one.
I just told, I told everybody during these listening sessions, some questions came out about masks, and I said, we'd be talking tonight. Most, most school districts in the area, you can see they're removing their masks. And, and also some will be this week as well, just because they're board meeting for this week, that's why. All right, so I'll, I'll send an update to staff. I'm going to wait till after the city council meeting on Tuesday, just then, and I'll send you that. I wish they would get it in. Yes.
It might be good on such a, you know, ornament, triggering topic, to also include that this doesn't mean it's forever. And if, if there are, if we have data points or indicators as to when we would reinstitute, that we share that, just to kind of reassure the community. That might be helpful.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, that all this continues to be fluid and flexible.
But it might be helpful for us to have information in advance for January for our session. I don't know, it's very possible, but just so that. To the city council or to, I'm thinking of city council, that when that goes to January for this, this school district, say, if this happens, we probably.
Oh, sorry.
Which is good, is that this school would have, I don't know, something somewhat, I don't concrete the word, but some suggestion of when they would reinstitute masks, so that the, the schools will be in that conversation instead of the reverse.
Totally agree. Yeah, because honestly, the district is much more closely tied to and tuned into what's going on at the school than the city council, no offense to city council, but they've got other things that, other fish to fry, so to speak.
I guess too, I mean, there is lots of information that, not actually so lots, but really what's the jurisdictional authority of the city owner, so, so in a lot of ways, that, that can be also something that, hopefully, the city council understands that our jurisdiction, jurisdiction, or the board's jurisdiction of the district is different than theirs over, over the school district. So I think we're trying to keep that out of that conversation. So I wonder if they'll send out a communication to. I'm sorry, I bet they can't vote before then. I mean, they would have to, especially.
Holidays.
It's the holidays, yeah.
I bet the store owners will be happy though, store owners, restaurants.
That actually is a start of the month. So I mean, it's, that probably just got to start, but our little mask group has not been discussing business or to just the school, so.
They're going to be jealous.
It may happen all at once, but that hasn't, I have no idea. I mean, we're going to bring it up tomorrow, but we don't have, and research your information on that.
Thank you. Listening summaries, want to walk us through?
Sure. Let's see here, that E-Pass, sorry, I'm into middle schools and the parent listening is not in here. This just happened after the, we can't get my mail. So they're always fun, I think they're engaging opportunities for, for us. I definitely appreciate the participation, and we, we do this at a time where its folks can, can come voluntarily and participate in it. So I won't, I won't talk to all of the points, because there's, there are a lot of different things that each group brought up. But I think generally speaking, one, one trend was concerned about student absenteeism and how that's impacting our current school staff. So, and I think that's connected to a lot of other things. We're asking parents to keep their children at home if they're sick. And there also might be additional anxieties related to just, just to return to school. So, so we've thought about some different ways to support, and I know it's different at, into elementary school versus the high school. One of the things that we're seeing is when, when there's increased absenteeism, it, it takes a more of a toll on the staff as well, because then they're trying to backfill missed work, retake tests. And so all of those things that maybe we can use late start Wednesdays at the high school to provide. And this came out, actually, Dustin and I during the secret student advisory group, had the idea that during those late start Wednesdays, that students who need to make up a test or retake a test could do that under appropriate supervision, so that Jesse's working on, on that. During those late start Wednesdays, that students who need to make up a test or retake a test could do that under appropriate supervision. So Jesse's working on, on that. Instructional rounds, just some feedback generally at a couple of different schools that sometimes the word problem or practice get kind of in a hard way. And so I think that's just good feedback, you know, as it is a practice that, that I didn't create or we didn't create, but still how do we learn from that? And say, you know, maybe it's opportunities, opportunities to grow and what are we really focusing on? So taking that language is important. Late start Wednesdays, lots of different discussions around, you know, what's, what's working there, what's not working there, and what are some opportunities? Um, in the, in the middle of this, we also provided our PLC and TSS follow-up. Survey and staff and there was about over ninety percent, ninety, ninety, ninety step, ninety staff members who completed that. And tomorrow principals are going to be looking at that with their assistant principals and also then bringing that data back to their school teams. So. Um, I see some really good opportunities for us to, um, everyone at this point has a base, baseline understanding of. MTSF, so TLC. Now, how do we constantly evolve so that they're meaningful times together? Um, and some, some grade levels or some schools are seeing more success and quicker than others. And what, what lessons are learned there and how is that happening? And then how do we? So, um, any questions about, those are three, three big topics that, that came up. There and I can talk about some more chunks. There was some question about the S R three funds. Just like, what's the timing for that? And so that was some feedback that when we first started back in August, I shared. At, um, at our, our back to school meeting that we'd be working on some, some one-time stipend. I think that was not clearly articulated what the time, time frame would be. So there was some, some concern that when is that gonna happen? So we've. We've been, um, taking that feedback and Suzie submitted the S R three funds. We earmarked a third, basically a third of that, that money. To go to some type of one-time compensation. Once that's approved by CD, then we will start with that. So. Just, I think connects to, to communication there.
Do we have new timelines since that was an issue in the last? Do we have that now or not?
I don't know, Suzie, it's taken a little bit longer.
Yeah, when we, when we applied for S R one and S R two, the turnaround is pretty quick. But. My understanding from people that are still submitting S R two and now S R three, that it's taking a lot longer. I'm not sure if CD is just looking at it. I don't really know what's going on, but where it's taking like months. And it's a lot, it's not just this, it's a lot of the things that they do at their typical grants that are a lot slower than usual. So. We submitted it, gosh, probably two weeks ago, two or three weeks ago now. And my hope is sometime in January we hear, but. I, I don't, I don't know for sure.
Some of that questions were some of the districts have already received these conversations and we don't disagree. We also saw today that the simple district eleven. Just in S R three, it's fifty nine million dollars, fifty nine million dollars. That's a, that's over a million dollars at school. And if we had a million dollars at school, wow, we could do a whole lot of things. So, so it's based off of, um, pre-reduced lunch and ours, we know our. Pre-reduced lunch percentage is not as significant as, as other school districts in our area. So. Um, we're, we're working with different monies there, but I think that's our role of, and that's why this time.
Some of the schools also did their stipends based off of S R two dollars versus S R three. So they may have already gotten it, but that's. S R two, which again, relative speaking, we didn't really have much in S R two. So, um. Yeah, I think it's just tough because they know they hear neighboring, what neighboring districts are doing, but we're trying to get there. We'll, we'll put a committee together once we do have that approval to figure out the best way to spend it.
We have some questions about late start Wednesdays, just around what's, what day's best day and those types of things. So we're gonna continue to look at that. Good questions around like the middle elementary school in town, the elementary school. Are we gonna start science and social studies resources? And we said we're gonna focus on that first because you can't roll out all of these different resources. All at once, that, that would be a lot. They had questions about the bond. Um, just in general ways to support each other, especially considering, you know, when we look at, um. The, the demands of the world and how our staff were experiencing a lot of these things. So I, I think that conversation came up frequently around how do we support staff right now? Um, during this time. So, um, generally speaking. It was extremely beneficial and already starting to make some changes there. So I, I appreciate this time. Suzie or Eric, they were on all of this. The parent, the parent session that just happened last week, there were some questions about grading and some of the. They believe some of the inconsistencies around grading practices. So Jesse did share that at the BLT level at the start, they're gonna be looking at some of those practices. Some choice questions came up with the parents, just the process around if they're out of district and how, how does. What was the specific question? How do they, they get accepted basically once they're on the waitlist?
All the questions about grading, I'm sorry.
About grading. Uh, a couple of different parents believe that there were some inconsistent grading practices. At the high school and, and also it was communicated that sometimes when something's not graded. It takes a longer time to grade than that can really be hard for the parents to monitor where someone that feedback's not happening quickly, it's hard for the parents to help their child. So they get far behind and it adds more stress to the children. So.
So it's a climbing of grading.
Timing and just different practices internally. So each, is that right, Justin?
Yeah, I would say the other thing is inconsistencies, um, with late policy. Groundwise, where, um, you know, different teachers have different policies and that. The parent being tuned to, to what's appropriate for that class.
So the other, um, I think like a teacher at middle school had a really great question, like right now, and I don't know how long the practice has been. But you have to take, leave into our increments. And that could be really, um, dissuade someone from only taking thirty minutes if they're, they're, they're appointments at the end of the day. So I think this is something that we can look at and it's just, if a person doesn't have to use two hours. Let's not, I know that, I looked at Kendall because that would impact Kendall, but I think we all would rather do what's best for all staff. And if it's only thirty minutes versus two hours, because then what ends up happening, someone might say, I'm just gonna take half a day. Or I'm gonna just take a full day. So let's, let's be more consistent. I see some nodding.
Yeah, there's a little logic to it. And then also though, but then also you have to monitor if it's not a deal, right? I mean, it's always that yin and yang with every policy, every rule, every exception.
Those are the parts of the listening session. Do you have other questions?
I like little things like that, um, something like not having to take two hours. You know, when you can't pay, like we're saying, we're shooting for a little bit of weight, we're not there. And when you can't do that, all these other little things, you can find ways to empower and to give. Value that doesn't necessarily have to be paycheck. So that would be one.
And when you think about it, and Suzie pointed out, really connected when schools moved to those block schedules because it was harder, you needed to have someone there for a block plan. Well. That's not everyone's school reality. It's, we can figure it out, but what are the?
Right, the framework.
Every time, because I mean, I had a teacher text me last night, you know, da, 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 don't even need coverage, don't have kids. So then if you have your plan time at the end of the day, you have kids, then you don't need coverage. So it's easier than if you do. You know, it's like all these little nuances to it. So every time you do something that you're like, yes, by all means, take it off. And someone else is like, yeah, but that doesn't work. Right? I mean, it just, I'm not saying it's good or bad. I'm just saying there's multiple factors every time you do something. There's always intended and unintended consequences. Does that mean every Friday?
Thanks. I just appreciate that. All the staff who came in, we still have transportation next week as well.
Any more questions? All right, no levy, letter to the community. Thank you, Suzie.
Yeah, I just, I started to, CD has one on their website that you could alter and I did that and put our numbers in and then I'm reading it and I'm like, this is so confusing. Because it starts off by saying, every, people will see their taxes go up and they're talking about the, because of the new. Added the one mill that we're doing. And I'm like, that's not why our taxes are going up. Because, I mean, assess evaluate, the assess valuation's going up, but also we have that twenty five percent for mill levy override. So really our mills are dropping. And so it just kind of, I'm going through, I'm like, this is gonna confuse people more. So I just threw this together. I feel like it just is explaining the two different. The two different sets that make our total mill. There's the, the school finance, the total program mills that we have to do by. Statute and then there's our mill levy override. So I, I broke that out. I was thinking it's pretty, it's pretty clear and not that confusing. Um. But I'm in it every day. So. That's where I wanted y'all to see that. And we're thinking of just posting that on our website just to be transparent. So. Um, the taxpayers can go there if they need to. And I, I mean, they can always reach out to me too. And I can. Actually pull up their taxes and go through it with them and walk through it if anybody ever wants that.
I like it.
Would you be happy for putting that in there, that language in there? If they could reach out to you.
Yeah, questions? Because that was my thought when I read it. I thought I added that at the end. Oh yeah, I could put that in. It's a very, that they can reach out, talk to you with Suzie.
School finance with Suzie.
Yeah. School finance one oh one in one hour.
Yeah. I'm guessing most people reply, but I just thought if somebody's really. No, I think that's good. Yeah, because I'd rather people reach out, I mean, especially during this bond, they did have some random people coming. We talked through it and. I think I'd rather them ask questions than us be on the same page then.
I think we actually talked about that actually when we used to, before COVID or on our leadership academies, having department heads run sessions like that. You know, having even like you doing some fun little quirky, um. Finance is fun and, um. Because school finance, especially in Colorado, right, is not easy. And so, and it's, and it's warped and it's continued to morph. And so I think, um, I don't know. Amen.
Finance is fun. May need to be more of a happy hour discussion.
Suzie posted on the website, people can access it and do it whenever they like. There you go, whatever they like. Unless there was.
Unless it's a good one, right?
It is a basketball property, no. Um, so.
Best grant application and possible future bond project discussion.
Yeah, this will be brief. We submitted the intent to apply for the best, which is probably the easiest thing with CD you ever have to do. Um, but, and then we have a meeting this week, Suzie and I with, with, um, Wember and also Trainer. And then Nun and Natalie Jack are also gonna be able to join us. We have done some lock theories and some possible ways to really look at potentially. Uh, making the new, that new footprint not as significant and look at some other ideas. So we just want to be on the same page. Um, before we move forward with any best application development, because that is, that is a big turnaround, a quick turnaround. Um, at this point, Wember and Trainer have offered to, to support us in that continuity. Um, there's no guarantee that if, if we were ever actually, when, when we get funded for the bond, that they would be, they would still have to go through the ARQ process, but. They have offered to continue to support us. So that's this Thursday and then we'll, we'll look over there. So.
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, two thirty.
Yeah, Wednesday.
Questions on that topic? Enrollment. Lovely graphs.
Couple of different graphs, uh, the historical, but Suzie, don't worry.
No, I, it doesn't matter. Um, so the historical enrollment, we'll start with that one. Our October count was just finalized last week. So we got our, our numbers. Um, we're at a, really at a. A low. An enrollment, uh, our total enrollment, this is pre K through twelve. So just a caveat there is we're not funded for pre K. As a fairly, but we include them in our numbers. Um, so this is actual student council in our building. We're thirteen twenty nine this year. So. We took a dip from last year. Um, funding wise, like I told you, this isn't gonna hit us as much because we get to go into that averaging. But, um, we are at an all time low, not all time, but over the past twelve, thirteen years at least. Um. For choice, we're still hovering right around that fifty percent. I will be working, um, when we, now that we have these numbers, we'll submit them to our. CFO group and that's when we put together to actually understand where our people are going and coming. But the next. Sheet is kind of the internal audit that we went ahead and did with the people that, the students that were in our buildings last year. That left, that we knew where they were going. So if you could go to the other ones, Pat. So Elizabeth, that's correct, right? These were students that were.
Yeah.
Our students last year figured out where they went and these are the, the different groups. So. Um, the top section is our students that reside in Manchester Spring School District. The bottom section was our choice students that were here last year. And. So you could see just distribution of where they went a big. A lot of them actually moved out of state. Um, and then some went to other public schools within the state.
And a lot of the public schools in state are online schools.
Okay, so I was gonna ask, I mean, the other question is, are those within the Pike Peak region or are those. Out of like public school in state that are going to grind out?
Yeah, we didn't differentiate that, but I can tell you that like there was not a significant trend that, um.
Of where they were.
Of where they were going in district or like in the, in the county or to online, but I would say significant portion of online at the secondary.
And how does that decrease, you said, you know? How does that compare to other districts decrease? In the region. So in other words, I know other districts. Someplace I go daily have taken a hit as well, going to online. So I wonder then what is the percentage or numbers for all?
Um, we haven't gotten together to talk about our final October count. Last, I was, I met with the group, everybody was down pretty significantly. Um. But now that we have final numbers, we will get together in, um, January and really talk about that. And that's when we see our report that where do our students that reside in Nantucket, why are they not going to Nantucket? Where are those students that are moving? That's the next report that you'll see. But I mean, I think we're consistent. The big trend is when do those online schools or homeschooling? Are the two trends that hurt most?
I bet it's gonna be better. I mean, I bet Nantucket's gonna be better than Strunich. There's only a one point two percent decrease. Now, we take a bigger two years ago, the last year. But it's only one point two percent last year to this year. I bet that's gonna be less, I don't know, but I bet that's gonna be less than most places. And then Elizabeth, you were doing follow-up phone calls with people that were. Were leaving to get kind of a, a sense. It looks like, and I, I'm just looking it out, it looks like a lot of the. Choice kids and, and again, some like kids best friends are, are choice kids. A lot of them kind of leave during transitions, like thirteen, eleven. Seven grade eleven, eleven, nineteen, twenty-three. Do we have any, and, and maybe there's a question for the board repeat, but just. You know, kind of understanding of what's, what's causing that? Because obviously those are, I mean, some of those kids have been in school, I know two of them. Have been in school since they were kindergarten. So I mean, they've been my friend buddies for nine years and what's causing them that?
Yeah, I mean, in terms of like that deep diamond, that specificity, this, this one won't help you, but I know our principals will have that specificity. I know, for example. Jesse was just telling me his family just could not afford to live here anymore and moved out of state. Is that where they moved?
You know, this semester, we had a number of students that had moved out of state. Which I, I think is interesting. You know, some of them that we talked to, it was cost of living. So. At other kids that have left since October count, uh, the majority of those kids have moved out of state.
We know.
We're working with their family on Friday where they're in South Carolina.
You know, a lot of rents are about to increase. They're supposed to increase in, uh, January. So that, that could be also some, that. Folks, I was at a superintendent's meeting on Friday, rural schools out east are starting to get huge. So they're, they're leaving these larger. Urbans, urban school systems and they're going out where they can have more affordable housing.
Well, that's what I was gonna say. I mean, I know a lot of these districts are, everybody's shrinking, but there's some districts that have actual growth, like building are huge.
People are buying crack the land. Yeah, they are. They'll commute if they have to or they're now doing workout. But yeah, a lot of growth out there. And so they're still seeing, some of these districts are still seeing decreases in enrollment, even though there are.
Subdivisions being built in there and their boundaries. So, I mean, we kind of know what happens here because we don't have space to build and new people coming in. But it's heavy for.
Same thing about like wide field. It's one of the fastest growing communities that have the Amazon distribution center. It's, it's gonna be so significant that they're gonna be building schools just for their employment based stuff. So. I think, uh, it's important to watch, but I would agree. I think we'll continue to increase. I know they're getting, uh, Maria, you're getting requests.
We have, um, since probably the last six, actually since we came back, everything's gonna break. Got thirty applicants and we've accepted about ten that were out of district and we've got claimer ten more that are in district. So we're, we're going through that now. So we've increased just since probably fifteen kids in the last.
One thing, I'm sorry.
We're full in multiple grade levels now, so.
One thing that we also monitor is the number of students with a five or four on our, our individuals, their caseloads. And I think Colleen brought up an important data point that seventy-five percent of students on a five or four are out of district. And that was some new information that we're really looking into and considering, what does that mean? Because as you start to increase and you have to increase the resources at the school. So that's a, that's a flipped model. That's typically not that.
That is an interesting about the time and effect on that disparity.
So the question is how many had a five or four place before they came? Because obviously stuff happens, you know, every year we get older sadly. But you know, some of that probably happened when they were already here. So again, you know, what was?
And then the, the, the point about transition years, we would agree. So for example, Dustin and Maria have been working and, and Chris as well, have been working very close on what is that transition from the elementary to middle school flight. And then we also just want to make sure we're telling the story because our school are fantastic and making sure we're doing that. So.
Do we do that? Do we do, and how spring, I'm assuming that we do?
Yes.
But I haven't seen one or seen one, so I just wanna say come on, one.
Yeah, you passed just had, we'll have another one in January.
I gotta go to the lower, because they normally have to take. Alright, awesome. Anything else?
Thank you.
Invite to late start Wednesday and calendar update.
Yeah, just wanted to say, you know, I think there's some really great things going on late starts and areas for growth for sure. But I'd love to invite you all, if you'd like to attend one of those, even if you came for an hour and we went to some of the schools, just let me know. And it's any Wednesday that works and if this, even if it's not a PLC or MTSS, I just want to talk, make that available.
What time do they start?
Started at eight. So you don't even have to make a huge advance notice. Just tell me, hey, I would like to come and then I'll meet you wherever, wherever you want to go. I, I, we just pop around different schools those days.
And eight to ten, is that right?
Eight to tenish, yeah. And then I just will let the principal know that a couple of us are coming. Tina came last week when we went down to middle school.
I'm glad I did because my next Wednesday that I'm available is the sixth of March.
And then the last thing I had was just April twentieth is a late start Wednesday. It's, I don't remember is that, but we need to make that a non-late start Wednesday. Thirteenth, excuse me. I keep saying twenty. April. That is the state's SAT date. So everyone has to give SAT on that same day. You can't be flexible. So we need to make that a non-late start day. There's no board action that needs to happen. This is just wanted to, to make you all aware and we won't substitute it out for any other week because there's no other week where there's a full D. We only do these. So we'll be sure to let staff know and put small D. Any problems with that or?
That makes sense.
If we do late start in the future, we'll make sure of, of we're in these days.
Yeah, Chris, because I'm like, he's right here, but.
Oh, I can talk for.
Alright.